Welcome everyone. I just need a motion to adjourn to executive session. We have three topics to discuss. We have an update on Barnes Street. We're meeting with our attorneys as well for update on BTA negotiations, contract negotiations, as well as a potential tenure for a particular teacher. So, just Scott, thank you. Eric, thank you. All's in favor? Motion passes four zero and we are off at five. Okay, welcome back. We're coming back from the executive session. I need a motion, the second, to open our public session back up. Thank you, Harry. How was it, favor? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. We're now in the public session. And I'd like to have a student rep tonight. Can I ask you to use the pledge to him? Andrew.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we begin with a one straight remarks? Would you like to go first?
I would love to. Good evening. I have two updates from the State Education Department. The first is on graduation pathways. So I've mentioned at previous meetings that the State Department is looking, or in the process of reviewing graduation requirements across the state. At the December Board of Regents meeting, information was shared on what some states are doing across the country. And it was, you know, in my opinion, pretty great. We had, there were some presentations on capstone projects, work-based learning, really thinking about all the different strengths that students could bring to the table to demonstrate, you know, high school sort of equivalency or high school proficiency. And sort of using that as information towards them earning a high school diploma. So this subgroup is continuing to meet. They will be coming back to the Board of Regents in the spring after soliciting feedback through surveys and through some regional focus groups. We look forward to that update and how that story sort of progresses. And the second comment has to do with amendments to professional learning plans. So this is an annual requirement that the Board approves usually in late summer. We meet as a professional learning team. We develop our professional learning plans based on some feedback and data that we've received from staff. I'm sure all the administrators in the room have read and memorized the contents. But we're, what they have asked, there's some new requirements in terms of moving forward. So we're there, and we're doing a number of these things. One is it's no longer professional development, it's professional learning. It's great, we have that. They asked that we use quantitative and qualitative feedback in developing the plan, which we do with that group. But one new key mandate that will be on our radar in the near future, and you'll hear a lot about moving forward, is for the plan to now be culturally responsive. So this is something, this is a really major thing that we haven't really dipped our toe into yet as a system. The state has a culturally responsive framework. And there is professional learning that is, will be needed to support that. So we'll make sure we discuss that with the professional learning team and through some of the other committee and task force work that we have moving forward.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. A few updates. With school reopening on January 2nd following the holiday break, students and staff, welcome Assistant Principal Mr. John Conroy back to JFK, from his leave. Since departing in early September, Mr. Conroy was greatly missed by the students and staff. I had an opportunity to welcome Mr. Conroy back, and it was clearly evident that his presence was missed and his return was celebrated. It was certainly evidenced by the many smiles, hugs, and hellos that were shared with him upon his return. And of course, I would be remiss without mentioning that Dr. Zambrolin has shared his delight in having his colleague back to help support the daily needs of the building as this fine team moves into the spring months to lead the wonderful work that's been underway in the building. It's also worth sharing the contract negotiations with our BTA are scheduled. Several dates are on the calendar. Both sides are looking forward to healthy, productive, and good faith negotiations in the coming weeks. And finally, as we prepare to move into late winter months, planning for the spring hiring process is underway. Additionally, recommendations for tenure are being reviewed and discussed in the coming months. The Board will note that Ms. Jean Sherman is being recommended for tenure this evening in the consent agenda. I will share a bit from CD Star Principal Maggie Andriello's recommendation before the consent agenda is voted upon. And that concludes my comments.
Mr. President?
Hi, good evening. So we are anxiously awaiting the stated budget proposal. It should be out any day now. I'm hoping to receive it by Friday, at which point we'll be able to analyze it and report back to the Board at our January 28th Board meeting, which is also our first budget presentation. So we're in the season now. Our last Budget 101 was snowed out on December 17th. And because we're so close to the upcoming budget season, we'll be putting the Budget 101 videos from last year on the website. And we'll send out a Bears Backpack to let folks know that it's available for their viewing at their leisure. Just this past Friday, Mr. Barado, Mr. Friar has joined us this evening. Mr. Barado is here as well. The three of us met with members of the Brewster Sports Foundation, and they informed us of their intent to generously donate scoreboards for the baseball and softball fields. I've placed in front of you a mock of the scoreboard. Please ignore the colors. The colors are not what the scoreboard will be. But they wanted to share with us the appearance of the scoreboard in terms of what to expect. They wanted to make sure that the Board was in agreement with scoreboard donation before they moved forward. And they're prepared to attend the January 28th Board meeting for its acceptance. So really just looking for, you know, a head nod to let them know that it's okay to move forward. With that in mind, we also have scheduled the, or we're tentatively scheduling ribbon cutting for Friday, March 27th, which is our first home softball and baseball game. Knowing that the weather is always a challenge in March, we also are scheduling a tentative rain or snow date for Tuesday, March 31st. And more details will follow as Mr. Barado, Mr. Friar, and I pull together ribbon cutting to celebrate the completion of the fields and start the new baseball season. And that concludes my comments for the season.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Three of the members of the Board. In keeping with the Board's goal of keeping lots of communication open, we'll be studying that information. On behalf of the Board, we're holding, the Board will be holding a public hearing, a public forum entitled Brewster Vision 2025. And it will be a, I'll send out specific information. But it's going to be a positive space for us to open up the floor to members of the community to share their thoughts and visions for the future. It will be structured that evening. So more information will be coming out. So that will be the public forum. Look for information on that for February 6th. It will be held at Brewster High School in the ILC. Also, the Key Communicator Committee continues to meet. We'll be meeting for the second time. The Key Communicator Committee is, as you know, leaders from throughout the Brewster community. So we'll be meeting with them with the full executive team to share some of the wonderful things that are happening in each of our respective departments and also opening the lines of communication even further. The third thing that will be happening on is we've invited Senator Harcom to come into the high school, January 30th. I want to thank Mrs. Horler, and also Mr. Clark at the middle school. We'll be having some students and meeting with the Senator. And also the Senator will be touring the building. So it's a great way for our students to have a voice in the political world and also to share their thoughts and opinions for education moving forward. And then the last thing I just wanted to highlight is that the Board of Regents and the State Education Department will be holding several meetings, regional meetings throughout the state to talk about high school graduation requirements. It was supposed to be a one-year study, but now it's going to be a two-year study. So you'll be seeing information coming out through the district and Board in those regional meetings. And that concludes my comments for the season.
Thank you. My only comment is just to let the public know, we're in the middle of our attorney interviews. We have another one this evening, and we have two more coming up next week. And as we work through the process, we'll continue to update the community on that. Okay, so now we move on to our student representative. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Beth Stelor. I'm filling in for Erin Lauren at the high school. We are currently, The Big Fish is the musical. Big Fish, it's in the third week of March, I think rehearsals are going on for that. As Dr. Banlow said, we have the Senator coming on January 30th. Student leaders like Demo and the student governments will be talking to them, as well as the Wells Middle School leaders. The January Regents Review are happening right now. And all the Regents will be next week as of right now. And Brewster Education Foundation is hosting Brewster Scott Halden High School, January 24th, I believe, that Friday. And this weekend is a Bob U N conference in Washington DC.
Thank you. Okay, we move on now to our presentations, recognition discussion. And we amended it, just for those in the audience who picked up a paper copy, we already amended it online. There's a lasting addition for presentations. So first up will actually be Andrew de Bobbyo Eagle Scout Service Project. Welcome. You're welcome to stay there or come up here.
Hi, I am a scout with Troop One Brewster, and I am currently conducting a project for the benefit of the Southeast Museum. The end goal of the project is essentially to create an exhibit for, of history of education within Brewster. This mainly focuses on one-room schoolhouse education prior to the formation of the full Brewster district. And it consists of a couple of components. First of all, we've been conducting research with the archives of documents that exist to find information on this topic. We're using that research, compiling it into articles that are going to be featured on the Southeast Museum's website. And we're providing them with a display for the museum. It's essentially an exhibit. Another part of this, though, is that we are providing them with signs, which will be used to mark the locations of some old schoolhouses. And we were interested, I'm interested in seeing if the Brewster School District would like to have one of these signs on their property. Because we're interested in having one larger sign with widths of about three to four feet and a height of about two to three feet. And it would feature some information, basically a preface on the history of education in Brewster and the one-room schoolhouses. It would also feature a link to the Southeast Museum website so that people can visit and learn more about the history of education in Brewster. And a map and perhaps some pictures. I don't know yet which ones we would include. But aside from that, I'm interested in having this sign in an area that gets a decent amount of foot traffic. So for example, some, a place like behind JFK, near the turf field, some area in that location would be ideal. Though the final location, I would leave up to the district to decide which area is best for it. But that is what I'm proposing. I'm interested to see if you would like to have that sign.
Thank you. I think it's a great idea. Any other thoughts on, anyone else on the Board?
No, I mean, I think it sounds great. I think it's a great history study for you. It'll be interesting to see, you know, maybe the houses that we drive by now, that maybe were once a little schoolhouse. It sounds interesting.
I actually was wondering that anyway. And then on our, I think that perhaps you can work with Dr. Banlow and her team as to the ideal location. Yeah?
Wonderful project. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We move on now to technology goals. Mr. Stelor and Mr. Valdez.
Mr. Valdez and Mr. Stelor, come up here. Can I just say we have the state-of-the-art IT career. They'll be sharing their goals with everybody.
All right, good evening. I'm Jim Stelor, the Director of Technology and Innovation.
And I'm Bob Valdez, Assistant Director of Technology for Network Support and Operations.
And we wanted to talk to you about two of the main goals that we're working on through this year. We're going to start right off with the first one, which is in support of the district's goal to improve communication. And while you're looking for transparency types of information, one aspect that we're focusing on is the data that's behind all of that. So since Bear's Backpack is our main mode of communication with information out to families, and the parent portal is really the only way that parents can access report cards and other information about their child's progress, or the main mode, good data is key, all right? So what we've done is looked at this, and we found that Bear's Backpack, we're reaching 80% of our contacts. While, and to clarify that, that means all contacts. It doesn't mean 80% of families or parents. It's 80%, there might be two or three contacts for each student. Emergency calls, 98% of those contacts are being reached because we're using multiple modes, phone, email, and text. What we're working on right now is really combing through that data, identifying which parents or contacts have not been reached, and working to improve that. And so just in the last month, really gotten out, you know, 144 out of 211 that we initially identified. And this work is ongoing to really shore that up, to make sure that we're not saying, oh, well, we communicated this out, but if it's not getting to the people that we want, that's, we've kind of embraced that in terms of really making sure that that contact information is accurate. So, not glitzy, but important. Our second goal is really to look to improve our cybersecurity and data privacy posture to align with the new Ed Law 2D. And the threat is very real. In 2017, more than a million students were victims of identity theft. In 2018, and these numbers have been growing from half million about four or five years ago, I'm sorry, a half a billion. Twenty eight, first half of 2018, we had 3.3 billion records globally that were compromised. In 2019, the first half, this number grew to 4.1 billion.
That's not student or ma, student?
This is global, all right? And so, but the threat is definitely important because education is one of the top industries that they target. For the very reason that if you can get student information in terms of identity theft, then that could be one mode to get it is through schools. So New York State was proactive. It was partly in response to the In Bloom fiasco of 2014. But they said, listen, we really need to be clear about how schools should be using data, what they should do around it, and how they should protect it. And also be transparent with parents about what information is being used, who's, what other actors have access to it, what vendors, et cetera, and how are they treating it. Today, the Board of Regents had it on their agenda to approve the Part 121 regulations that address the Ed Law 2D. And I haven't heard yet as to whether or not they've been approved, but we anticipate that they will. So this is really the main components of that. It's focusing on data privacy and then also on transparency, really getting that information out there. A number of these things, we already have in place. We have a Parents' Bill of Rights that communicates what rights you have in terms of the data. You will get to see what vendors have, what their privacy policies are, and then what rights you have to say, no, I don't want this information out there, et cetera. So that's posted on our website already. We do have incident reporting and notification in place. We have identified a data protection officer. We've implemented annual training, as well as ongoing training for phishing, which is the main way that malware gets into any network. And Bob's going to talk a little bit more about that later. The protection of PII is part of what we do because that's the world that we're living in. And we have a number of these things already in place, even though the regulations are just being approved now. But there are some specific things that we kind of have to say, okay, how do they align with what we're already doing? So just a couple of things. The Parents' Bill of Rights, I already spoke about what that provides parents with, and that's the main piece of transparency. The other is with third-party contracts. Because we can say, yes, we have your data, it's in-house. But we work with lots of vendors that provide curriculum resources, other things in terms of transportation, food services, that this data resides. And so our goal is that every vendor must agree to the Parents' Bill of Rights. They must agree to encrypt that data when it's in transit, when it's at rest. They have to agree that all that data will only be used for educational purposes. They can't say, oh, we're going to do this, and then we're going to use that elsewhere for, you know, marketing, et cetera. It was one of the big things around Google, that there were questions around that. And Google has finally come on board to say, yes, because we really want to work in this space, we don't use any of that data for anything but educational purposes. And they have signed off on an agreement with one agency within the state that all, that we've actually agreed to be a part of. So that's one way. So a big vendor like Google also has to sign these contracts.
When did they, when did that happen? You know, when did, because they did, did you see, when did Google agree on it?
Just in this past few months. And we actually signed off on that last month to be part of that agreement, so. We're reaching out to all vendors now. And if they don't sign this addendum to our Parents' Bill of Rights, we can't use them, and we won't use them. And it's even if it's free software. So even if it's something that we said, oh, we're going there, if it involves personally identifiable information, if a student is using their Google account to sign in, they have to sign off on this. So it's just really taking that seriously, that wherever your student's data might reside, that we're being mindful about it and being proactive in saying, we're making sure that they're taking all of these steps to protect that thing. The, one of the requirements, first requirements that districts are required to implement is a data security and privacy policy. And a lot of the components that they're speaking of are, already exist in a number of other policies. And I'll speak to the first one while these other ones are coming up here. When we dispose of any computers from the district, we make sure that we use vendors that will destroy any data that's on any of the hard disks and give us verification back that that data has been destroyed. And a lot of this protection of personal information is identified in a lot of these. And I'll be working with the policy committee to say, do we need to create a separate policy that maybe references those to really align with what the requirements are? The NIST cybersecurity framework is really the, kind of the backbone of these requirements. And it really is saying, what are the people, the training, et cetera, the people that you have in place, the policies and procedures that you have in place, as well as the protection of the cyber assets within your network, really takes a broad scope. It's 108 different elements across these five components. And you really, that works as your target profile. We're in the process now of kind of analyzing where are we at and building an action plan. We're part of a work group that's working with other districts and the Lower Hudson Regional Information Center to go through that process. And Bob is going to talk to us a little bit more about the work that we're doing in that.
Sure.
So first thing you need to do when you're talking about cybersecurity is really understand the threats that are out there. So as Jim already mentioned, ransomware now are the most prevalent threats out there today to school districts. And we've seen just a rash of school districts nationally as well as locally have ransomware issues. We actually spoke to a local district across the river that had to delay the opening of school due to ransomware. As Jim mentioned, we're in a NIST training right now. And this is one of the facts that they gave us at that training, that ransomware costs for 2019 are expected to exceed $11.5 billion. So that's the cost of ransom is and/or recovering your data, recovering your network. And even scarier, ransomware infections are happening every 14 seconds. And as you can see, that number is expected to shrink and happen actually quicker in the coming years. So I wanted to point out that one of the protections that we have in place is our advanced firewall. And in September, we did some updates to that firewall. And that allowed us to enable something called geo-blocking, which is basically blocking traffic from the outside world from different geographic areas that are known to house malware. And since we put that policy in place, we've had 12 and a half million blocks on our firewall from those regions. So that just kind of demonstrates how real this threat is and how it's non-stop. And honestly, I was amazed when we put this in place, how quickly the numbers started accumulating. All right, so how are we protected? Again, the most important thing is knowledge. And the, one of the things that we did about two years ago is we signed on for the MSI's Act, which is basically the multi-state information sharing and analysis center. So it's local governments, it's state governments, it's school districts. They partner with the Department of Homeland Security, with the New York State Department of Education. We've had the NSA, we've had the FBI, we've had, there's a lot of partners in this. And the idea is to share the information about attacks and the traffic that they're seeing on the internet and basically give these agencies the tools and the understanding to better protect the network. So this is something that we get on a monthly basis. And it basically tells us what the top threats are, as well as where those threats are coming from. And then we can take that information, plug it into our firewall, and prevent those threats from coming to Brewster. This is just an example of a security primer that they also provide us. This will actually give us detailed information on some of those threats, how they affect the network, how they spread. And it gives you the information on how you can basically stop that from taking place. So some of the things that we have in place, we have advanced endpoint protection, which I presented to the Board about two years ago. We moved to this. This past year, we moved to a cloud-based version of that product. Basically, it uses machine learning, artificial intelligence. It watches network behavior and finds anomalies. It really is a very sophisticated, very advanced protection on our endpoints. And I'll come back to why that cloud integration piece is important a little later on. Again, our next-generation firewall, we really have best-in-class firewalls here. You have to think of the, you know, a lot of people think of the firewall as just basically stopping traffic coming in. But this firewall actually acts as an advanced threat protection. It essentially scans every bit of traffic that comes in and out of the Brewster Schools network. So that, what they consider north-south, north-south traffic in and out of the network is all scanned by the firewall. So that's very important, and it's amazing how much the firewalls pick up and stop.
It's our bouncer at the wall.
Exactly. So DNS, so every time you go into your machine or your endpoint, your phone, whatever it may be, you put in whatever website that you want to get to, CNN.com, whatever it is, that translates to an IP address. DNS is what does that for you behind the scenes. So if we can stop machines from being able to resolve addresses that harbor malware, then we can prevent those infections and the access to that malware payload. So we use something called Cisco Umbrella. They basically also block that resolution for known malware carriers. Patching, this is kind of, it's what no one likes to really talk about because it's the most painful part. But patching is the most important part. Every month, you know, Microsoft patches, we do firewall patches. We do patches pretty much non-stop. Last year, two years ago, we put in SCCM, which allows us to automate that patching process. Makes it a lot easier for us. We've had, we had actually a vulnerability that came up across, over the week, this past weekend. With SCCM, I was able to push out an updated version of the software that was patched to 175 machines within 30 minutes. It really reduces the time that it takes us to put these patches in place and makes it life a lot easier for us, and a lot safer. As well as removing known attack vectors. Through the information we get from the MSI's Act, we know how they're attacking machines so we can block those firewall ports, we can prevent that traffic in one way or another. So we're actively doing that as well. Advanced network monitoring, we monitor all the servers and all the key components to our network. So if anything is out of the ordinary, using a hard drive space, using a lot of processing, whatever the case may be, we get email alerts and notifies us exactly to the machine. We can take a look at it. And actually, that was one of the ways that a local school district found out that they had ransomware because they had some advanced network monitoring. We also implemented probably about two years ago now, LAPS, which is something, it's a Microsoft product. And it basically, it's software that gets installed on every computer, every server. And it gives every machine a random password for the administrative credentials on that machine. And that is really, really important because when this malware gets onto a machine, the first thing it wants to do is get its higher credentials on a machine. And then it wants to try to use those same credentials to move across the network. If every machine has a different set of credentials, it prevents that from happening. We also limit the users' abilities on the machines. We don't give people administrative access on the machines. They can't install software, they can't... they can't do any of those administrative functions. As well as for the network technicians, we, we limit where they log on to do domain administrative activities, basically limiting the exposure of those credentials. Network segmentation is basically just breaking the network up into smaller chunks so that if anything were to happen, it's a smaller attack vector that they could get to. We do active directory auditing, any changes to key accounts, any domain administration changes. We get email notifications, we can do run reports, when that change was made, where it was made from, and all those things. We do port security so that the network ports you see in a wall, people just can't come from their, with their home computer and plug into the network and get onto our network. So that was another thing, an attack vector that the local district believes might have infected their network.
Yeah, it's one of those things that in conversations we've had with people that have had these attacks, the malware attacks, and they've said, oh, well, it got on because of this, and we said, hmm, okay, we have that covered. So it's a lot of things that we're looking forward to being able to look at the NIST frameworks to then see what are those other, other components that maybe we haven't covered, but there are a lot of those things that we do already have in place.
So Jim mentioned phishing training. This is, this is really, really important, and as we've gone through our different trainings and got information from different security contractors and such, this is the main entry point to most networks. There's no need to hack your firewall or your machines if you can send them an email and trick you to click on a link. So having a informed and a trained, trained user base is very, very important. So about a year ago, we rolled out a product called Know Before, which basically sends out test phishing emails to the staff to see who clicks on it, and then we can provide training based on who are the clickers. So, I didn't mean to actually call him. So this is, you can see the results of the training up until this point. You can see we've had a significant drop in the percentage of clickers that we have in the district, which is great news. And we continue to send out emails and phishing tests to the staff. So where do we want to go? After speaking to a lot of, between the different trainings that we go to, the different security vendors that we have spoken to, the next area that we really want to cover is the inside of the network traffic. So we have a lot of protection on our computers, on our endpoints, we have great firewall protection. The traffic that traverses the network on the inside, once you're on the inside, is where we want to concentrate on next. So we're, we've been kind of shopping, meeting with different security vendors to do advanced network scanning and packet captures for inside traffic. So that's going to be east-west traffic, that basically means stuff that's on the inside, between servers, between computers, not going in and out of the network. And those scanner, those advanced network scanning is going to basically look for anomalies again, it's going to look for known patterns that ransomware and malware has shown before, and it's going to pick up those routines, and then you can basically have prescriptions to say, if you see this type of traffic, if you see this behavior, you can perform an action, isolate that endpoint, prevent that traffic from even happening. So we want to try to be proactive, we want to try to stop, if something does get in, we want to be able to stop it as quickly as possible, and we want to automate that, the isolation of the, and the risk mitigation. The next step, really, we have had a great backup strategy already. We have data in three separate locations, we've encrypted our data, we've, we've not put them in the domain so the credentials are all different, we've put a lot of security practices in place for our current backups. But at the end of the day, all of our backups are connected to our network in one way, shape, or form. And the suggestion from all of our vendors are, we should have at least one backup that's inaccessible by a network connection. So tape is really the best way to do this. So it will provide what they call the air gap between the network and our backup. We can make the backup media write-only, so you basically back up to it once, they can't alter it, even if they were to get a copy of the tape, you can encrypt the data on the tape, and basically provide that extra level of protection for the district. And it's really the most cost-effective way for the district to get that air gap backup as well as extend our backup retention. So the tapes are relatively expansive, and we can really, we hope to go out to maybe even seven years of backup. And that's it, we just want to say thank you for the opportunity to present it to you.
I have two questions, actually. One, going back to the beginning, and I haven't, I mean, I go to the website for certain things and I just go wherever, and I'm trying to remember, do we have, I know we have a place for people, we're talking about the community and getting information out to them. There's also a community at large that, you know, don't have students or have graduated and are kind of no longer part of the email thing automatically. And if people want to sign up, they can. But I think you have to kind of navigate through. I don't think we have on our front page, like, just a
We don't, and we should, yes.
Something just, because I think for people who aren't constantly on the website or have kids and know their way around.
Hey, sign up for our newsletter.
Yeah.
Yes, we can add that to it.
It's just a thought, I don't know. It could be helpful.
No, I certainly think so.
And the second question was, when you talked about staff not having access to loading software and things like that, what about apps or teaching tool-type apps or social media type, all that kind of stuff that they'll use with students, and does that all get approved also?
Yeah, it does come through our office. We, we have, like, for the iPads, we use a product called Jamf that manages all the iPads. If they want to purchase an app, we can literally push it down to 50 iPads at the same time. So all that stuff is done in, basically through the technology department, and we manage all those devices.
Okay. And so if there was something even free that teacher uploaded, would you be notified? If they just decide, oh, this looks like a good thing, I can talk to my kid? I don't know.
I guess the difference is, if it requires being installed on an iPad or on a device, then yes, they need us to do it. But if it's just a website to go to and it's free, they can go to it. One of the other tools that we are looking at is something that will kind of reside on everybody's device and give us feedback on all the places. While we have a firewall that looks at it, it's not like application-specific, where it could say, oh, they're using, you know, this particular software, and it's free, and we know this, how many, this number of people are using it. That's something that'll help us to identify, hey, do we need to reach out to this vendor to make sure that they're, they have good safety, security practices around data privacy?
Right, because there's still websites and things that we, kids, everybody uses that are just still out there, yeah.
Yeah, there's two philosophies. One is that for managing network access, one is just blocking everything and then only allowing out what you want to allow, and that's really restrictive to, you know, the freedom for, you know, instruction, and especially how, how things change and, you know, new things pop up all the time. So ours is open, we have a lot of other structures in place of known bad actors, and we say, these all fall within these frameworks that should be safe. And then the, and that, a lot of that we can control with the firewall controls that are there, but in terms of just how they're using the data, that's something that we need to be proactive in identifying and seeking out who's using it. And hopefully that teachers are going to be aware of this as an issue and be self-reporting to say, hey, I'd like to use this. And if we say no, they didn't sign it, that they, well, if we get to the point where we reach out to a vendor and they say, no, we're not going to sign it, then we will block it on there to say, no, until they sign it, and nobody locally can, can access them.
Thank you.
Just real quick, anytime I go to a meeting, I come back, and there's districts that are, you know, having issues with technology, or if there's something new, I know that Jim and Bob are ahead of me, always. So they've got it covered, so they are totally proactive with everything, so, so impressive. Thank you.
With these up, future items we're looking, do we have an idea of what kind of cost we're talking about, and is this like a co-service thing we could do, is it aidable?
Yeah, a lot of these items, we, anything that we're looking at, we look at, how can we purchase it through BOSI's or through Lyric so that we can get aid on it? And also get the purchasing power from them. So we, there is a big hole throughout the region for these kind of monitoring tools that Bob was talking about to kind of monitor your traffic east-west. So you have the firewall, you have these endpoint protection and everything, but once, the way we know that this malware works is, it gets on one endpoint, and it then travels throughout your network slowly, and it generally takes months and months before that happens. And then the ransomware, they sell access to someone who has ransomware, and that comes in. And so the, all the districts are really aware of that, of this and how that works, and that this kind of monitoring software is the key to then say, hey, we can monitor it, we can get notified of that kind of traffic, and also shut it down. And so Lyric has been looking at some different vendors and looking at ways that we can kind of get the economy to scale and purchase it for multiple districts. But the, we're working with one other district that's really been proactive, we've kind of really been out there looking at all the different solutions and really then reaching out to Lyric to say, hey, what about this, and let's get the other people on board. So, excuse me, with the tape backup, how labor-intensive is it, you know, kind of going to now that sort of system where you're physically changing tapes and things like that? I mean, how, is that something would be building level, district level?
It's actually, it's very simple. We have, we use Veeam, which is an enterprise-level backup solution. That same exact software can do the tape backup. So we already do Veeam backups, the tape solution will basically be taking those backups and moving them to a different media. And the backups that, the tape backup that we would do is basically a large changer. So you put a, basically like a cassette of 24 tapes, and it automatically pulls the tape, writes the data, puts the tape back, it's, it's very nice.
Yeah, they've changed a lot. It's, it used to be where you'd have to do multiple tapes for being able to do one backup, and so, yeah, it has reduced the, the impact. And that's one of the things where a lot of people have gone away from tape backups, but now it's coming back in vogue because of the realization that if they, you know, you can say, well, we do backups, but if that ransom, that malware gets onto the network and gets, encrypts your backups, then you have nothing. And that's, that's the key to recovering from something, and so it provides that air gap, but yeah, it's not, it's not that labor-intensive, so. And I, the cost that you inquired about, the proposed cost from these, that, a couple of the vendors that we looked at that really market this type of software solution to banks and other big organizations is well over $100,000 a year for that. And we've pushed back on each of those vendors to say, listen, that is just not realistic for, for what it does. And so we're working with a couple of different vendors on getting them, who want to break into the education space with that. They're already working there, but with this product they want to, and so we're really working to try to get them that down. Tape backups, looking at an initial cost of like $25,000 to get it in place, and that will last us for like four or five years.
Or more.
Or more. But the, what we had looked at in terms of the value and the cost, looking at like between 60,000, 60, $75,000 a year would be a lot, but, you know, kind of what we were budgeting for to say, that, if it could monitor all that and shut it down so that we knew that if something got on the network, past all these other things, it would be an isolated event, that that would be worth it, that's kind of what we were looking at. So in terms of budgeting, we're kind of looking in those, in those numbers, but obviously trying to get that as low as possible in terms of what, what the cost is for, you know, it's, and that's part of the NIST framework, is the, that it talks about often is cost-benefit analysis, you know? So we could, you know, have absolute, you know, Fort Knox here, as Victor has often referred to, you know, where people would like to have, but those, that comes at a cost, and so we have to balance that, so. Doing our best to keep the cost.
Thank you.
Okay, now move on to public remarks that are, would be specific to any action item below. Anyone has any comments you'd like to make specific to just on our actions for today? You're welcome to come up at this time. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to action items. Action number one, approval of 2020-21 installment purchase agreement IPA with Southern Westchester BOSI's for the purchase of technology devices.
Yes, this is following, excuse me, our long-range financial plan of replacing the important instructional technology devices for our students and staff, as Mr. Trulore and Mr. Veldas mentioned earlier. Fortunately, entering the 2021 year, we actually have an IPA, an older IPA that's falling off, so it's actually budget-neutral for the upcoming school year. So that's a very fortunate position for us to be in. It mirrors the same IPA as the prior year, a $400,000 borrowing, which ultimately amounts to a four-year replacement cycle in concert with our Smart Schools Bond Act allocation of several years ago. Again, it's referenced in our long-range financial plan, the last page.
Okay, I need a motion and a second, please. Carrie and Eric, thank you. Questions or comments? So then, is this the same thing where it works as we implement, what we impose after?
Yes, so we do receive BOSI's aid on, on this purchase, we would get it in the subsequent year. So we would get, we would get BOSI's aid on this purchase in the following school.
Right. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Seven opposed, motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Action number two, redesignation of bank account.
Yes, this is simply a housekeeping item that we establish a bank account for the proceeds regarding Street School sale later this month.
Okay, thank you. A motion and a second, please. Danny and Scott, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes 7-0. Action number three, approval of disciplinary settlement with employee number 2273.
Yes, this action item reflects the conditions of disciplinary settlement for employee 2273.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second, please. Eric and Glenn, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seven opposed, motion passes 7-0. Action number four, approval of extended employee agreement with Catherine Culligan for Human Resources Services.
Okay, yes, first, I'd like to share and express my sincerest gratitude to the board's willingness to commit to Ms. Culligan's consultant work during my transition here to Brewster. My predecessor's presence as a mentor has helped to ensure a smooth transition with her departure from my arrival, and hopefully by most accounts, the Human Resource Department of Brewster, which oversees approximately 800 employees, has not experienced any significant hip-ups specifically procedures, policies, and practices. The work of HR is truly unique within an organization, Ms. Culligan's institutional knowledge and history has ensured that I've been able to continue to grow her good work. While it's my hope that the board would ask, is this really necessary? As it would be an indication on my end of satisfaction with the transition and my role and work in it. The original contract affords the discretion of additional 20 days. These discretionary days are reflected in this MOA. It's important for me to share that it's up to 20 days, that's not a definitive 20 days. But it will help to ensure that a full year of mentorship is provided, particularly as the spring months rule that many HR tasks and responsibilities must be addressed in the latter half of the school year are successfully met. So again, I want to thank the board for their support and share my gratitude and your faith and investment in this role.
And if I could ask, I also, you know, spoke at length with Mr. Harrington whether or not he really, really needed these extra hours, and it is critical, because I kind of grilled him a little bit about it, but very, very critical that he has the support as we close out the end of the school year, so it's imperative.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion and a second, please. Scott and Krista, thank you. Questions or comments?
Just one quick, this is not something we'd be looking to do in next year. We would think after a full year, Mr. Harrington will be on board with the way we're running. I know, especially with the contract negotiations here stood at for, you know, around, that's not something we would look to continue next year, but.
Can you answer?
Sure.
That's correct.
Enjoy.
Yes, we would not, we would not look forward. He's doing a great job.
Anyone else? Okay, so I just need, all's in favor, we have a motion and a second, thank you. Okay, so all's in favor? Seven opposed, motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Okay. Okay, we move on to action number five, approval of SEIU MOA.
Sure, so with Ms. Bigler's recent retirement from the district as a head cook, this MOA with the SEIU allows for the creation of a new title within the unit as assistant cook. So the new title allows for greater efficiency and a more streamlined organizational hierarchy in our respective kitchen. So it's important to note that this MOA does not reflect any additional FTE, so it is cost neutral. It just reflects a change in title, no longer continuing with the title of two head cooks in one kitchen and being able again to streamline the hierarchy of the kitchen, so it is cost neutral.
Okay, thank you. A motion and a second please. Eric and Danny, thank you. Questions or comments?
So we currently have a head cook and this will be the assistant cook.
Correct. So with the, with the close of Garden Street, we had a head cook, we had two head cooks in one single kitchen in high school. As a result of the transition where Garden Street closed, so we have four head cooks with that title in three kitchens. So with Ms. Bigler's retirement, we worked with the SEIU to create a more streamlined hierarchy so that when the head cook is out, there's someone who's responsible for the kitchen.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seven opposed. Motion passes seven zero. Action number six, approval of overnight field trip to Columbia University Model UN Conference and exposition, January 16th, 17th, 18th, 19th, 20th.
Yes, so we submit this annual trip to Columbia University for Model UN through your approval. The, Mr. Mullane and four chaperones will be taking 20 students to Columbia University this week. This is one of several competitions that Model UN will be engaged in during this season. And as always, we thank Mr. Mullane and all the chaperones who are giving up for the weekend to support our students.
Thank you. A motion and a second please. Carrie and Glenn, thank you. Questions or comments?
Just one quick question. Why are we doing it so late? Normally we do it. Is it just a hopekeeping thing?
Yes, with overnight trips, they're, those are the ones that require approval from, from the Board of Education. It's already a very lengthy process to make sure we have all our i's dotted and t's crossed. I'm, I'm looking at him and blaming him, yes. And so that, it's just as a lengthy process and there are several competitions, so it just takes a long time.
And if this is in New York City, why is it an overnight trip?
Because the competition itself runs into, you know, the evening hours. It's, it's not just a, you know, nine to five typical sort of overnight life.
All those in favor? Seven opposed. Motion passes seven zero. Okay, we move on to the consent agenda.
Okay, so as previously mentioned, Ms. Sherman is being recommended for tenure this evening. She is a reading teacher at CB Star. Decisions regarding tenure are arguably the most important decisions a district can make as it reflects a long-term commitment to an individual and acknowledgement of that individual's capacity to have a long-term and positive impact on literally the lives of thousands of children. I'm pleased to share that there was unanimous recognition by the administrative team regarding Ms. Sherman's value to the children of Brewster. And if I may, just share Ms. Andrea Loos' comments that she shared with me. Ms. Sherman is a dedicated and motivated professional who is passionate about getting children to love reading. She's an active member of our staff and serves on a number of building and district committees, most notably the professional learning team. A lifelong learner, Ms. Sherman is continually researching the most up-to-date interventions and practices and using this knowledge to drive her practice. She's an active member of our CB Star MTSS team and is working with the administration and teachers to revise the MTSS process. She works diligently to support teachers in developing and implementing peer interventions for all students and maintains up-to-date records on all students that she uses to formulate individual learning goals for each student. Her dedication to her student success is evident in the individual approaches that she uses to address each child's unique learning style. So it is without reservation that she is being recommended to the board this evening for consideration for tenure as part of our consent agenda.
Thank you. Need a motion and a second please. Glenn and Krista, thank you. Questions or comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seven opposed. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. First off, our public remarks. If there are any other comments or remarks that anyone here would like to make, please come up. We have three minutes to remain impressed with the board. Okay, so we will move on then to number two, summary of email communications to the board for the past two weeks. I don't believe there was anything that came in. I checked up again, I didn't see anything. So that's good. A little, board remarks and committee updates? Anything anyone wants to throw out there?
Couple of little items. I want to also welcome Mr. Conroy back. I'm very glad to hear that he is back among us. I want to thank the Brewster Sports Foundation for the projected things for the baseball and softball fields. It'd be a great item to have. This weekend, there's an Applebee's fundraiser, I believe from one of the local baseball teams, Cooperstown teams. It's on Saturday at Applebee's, I believe it starts at eight. And I would just want a comment on a previous presentation we had on class size in JFK. I just wanted to see if there's any reason to have a follow-up on what was done and that, you know, we have the proper people in place, the numbers have stabilized and everything is good, maybe have a future board meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Still, I can forget anything, but.
Actually, I was just, it was stated very succinctly by the student representative, but the Brewster's Got Talent is coming up on the 24th, so $15 in advance, $20 at the door. It's a great fundraiser for a great cause, but it's also a really fun night. You get to see just how much talent there really is in this community, whether it's students, whether it's alumni, faculty members. It's a lot of fun. It's obviously appropriate for all ages, so please feel free to come out and enjoy it. Good night.
Okay, so just upcoming meetings, they were actually, said a lot of it earlier tonight, but our next board meeting is the 28th. And I forgot one, so we're good on that. And then of course, remarks can be emailed to the board at boe@brewsterschoolsboard. We do need to, I guess, adjourn to executive session to continue our interviewing, so I need a motion for that, please. Krista, thank you. Carrie, my second. So for the purpose of, I said that right, I'm reviewing returns. All those in favor? Motion passes seven zero. So we'll off to executive session for that. Thank you everyone for coming.